I was gonna show that. Okay, I'm gonna, we're gonna do the Cole County Emergency Response Team first, so, okay. We're gonna call them in to order. It's Tuesday, February 18, 2020. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, born and unborn.
Okay, minutes or reports received and filed.
January 2020, collectible, please file.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got the back Board of Directors meeting tomorrow, Campbell Board of Directors and Advisory Board meeting tomorrow. Home Builders Association home shows this weekend at Capitol Mall Friday and Saturday. Breakfast Rotary Club's got a midwinter barbecue that Friday. Friday at the Knights, Max's. And then Palerox FFA has a dinner Saturday out at Wardsville. We've got an important radio show this weekend with Mark, so we'll see you Sunday. I think that's it.
Hope you talk better.
Yeah, might be better if I can.
So, I have a sleep board meeting tomorrow at 11:30. There's a, Missouri River Region Libraries having some type of a gathering tomorrow at 2:00. And then we had a Port Authority meeting this morning, some dates here, February 25th, there's IRPT Inland River something. Inland River's Ports and Terminals Conference for the whole state here, February 25th. Doubletree, there's a reception at 5:30. Actually, the reception starts at 7:00, sorry, but there'll be all people from all over the state here for that, so, anyway. If you guys wanna attend, we did, the Heartland Port did sponsor that, so just let me know.
Okay, I don't have much till Friday. We got Cap Region Board Meeting and then Board Retreat. Saturday morning's Board Retreat. I'll tell you, our chairman, we got, it drags on and on and on. Oh, sorry, Mark. And then, Little Theater, we're going to see Rob. That's all I got, so. Okay, presentation for staff consultants invited guests. Before I knew Mark, we're gonna jump out and go with our Cole County Emergency Response Team. Bill, would you like to introduce our?
Will. So, about a year or so ago, Mike Racker, who's been the chief of the hazmat team since early 2000s, I guess, decided to kinda step down and made it more official here recently, so the group has elected to bring Neil Warman in as the chief of the operation. Barry Guy and Sean York as the assistant chiefs. These guys have really kept this thing running for the last year and a half, almost two years. I think it was customary, from what I understand, back when Bob Jones, Pee Wee and those were commissioners, that they literally appointed the officers. So I'd like to do that today with the commission before my last day next week and make sure these guys, and they have done an excellent job, as you know. We cover Region F, the 13 counties, but anywhere in the state that they might need that. Luckily, we've not had to do that. But Neil's retired from Jeff City Fire. Barry and Sean both in the fire service as well. They do an excellent job. And so you have about 25 volunteers, the commission does, that puts in a lot of hours for you, that's kinda behind the lines, that you don't really see. But if there's a big emergency, they're trained and they're ready to go. We do a lot of stuff with Lake Ozarks. These guys spend their weekends going down there, helping them with the big, large events, with the mobile command center, and they just do a lot of work. So I'd just like the commission to make that official if they're appointed. Anything changes, that will be brought to the point of the commission. Any questions?
No, I'm fine. I saw them that day at the Capitol when you had that hazmat drill. And, yeah, I think that's great.
They put in a lot of hours.
I think it's a good team. I don't know about Barry.
Everybody wonders about Barry.
Yeah.
No comment.
But I'd just like to make that official, that the commission does approve them. If someone makes a motion, I just think it's kinda normal. That's the way it was done many years ago, so they basically work for you and everybody else, so.
Volunteer for us.
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it, guys.
A lot of work.
Stepping up, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I move that we approve the appointments.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Gentlemen, thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, we have our illustrious.
You guys don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Okay, we have our illustrious Chairman of the Cole County Bicentennial Committee, Mark Ellinger, to give us a bicentennial update.
Okay, may I just jump in?
We can't. You wanna talk about?
I'll cover that. That's on my list of things to cover.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, wanted to touch base on, give you guys an update of where we're at. I think we've been trying to do this about monthly, to kinda come in, particularly now that we're in 2020, which is the year of the bicentennial. Sam's been involved with the joint Cole-Boone-Callaway Bicentennial Celebration, so I'm not gonna touch on that. You can, I'll leave that entirely in your bailiwick, but I will talk about what we're doing for Cole County. As you all may recall, we have a kickoff that is now established formally. It's gonna be June 5th at 11:00 a.m. at the Marion River Access. As you know, Marion was the site of the original Cole County Courthouse. We thought we would kickoff our bicentennial at the site where the county kinda kicked off, which is in Marion. It'll be open to the public, but it'll be basically a kickoff, and then we'll go into Bob Pretty giving a little history of Cole County. There'll probably be punch and cookies and things like that available, and then we'll take the show on the road. We're gonna hit every community in the course of the summer and early fall. We've decided to use the parish picnics and events of that type, including the salute to Jeff City as a way to get information out and to be able to celebrate in each of the various communities across the county. So that, that's June 5th. Sam has been, I let Sam have the lead on the bourbon thing. Sam's been working with a local distillery who's going to do a Cole County Bourbon. And kickoff celebration for Cole County Bourbon will be on June 6th. I think that's gonna be at Prison Brew's Sidebar. That's, there's the label. Basically that, there'll be two different levels of bourbon. There'll be the standard level bourbon, and then there'll also be 200 limited bottles, limited edition bottles.
They're worth a sign.
If you want a limited edition bottle, you'll have to let everybody know, because I think they'll go quick. The regular bottles are, I think, $30, and the limited edition bottles are $50. In the course of putting all this together, we've also got an RFP out on the street. Thank you very much to Jessica for helping us with that.
Thank you.
That's for Cole County Bicentennial Coins. As you may recall, I passed those out previously. I didn't bring extra copies today, sorry. We have the bicentennial coins that were done in, or excuse me, sesquicentennial coins that were done in 1970. We've decided to do bicentennial coins for the bicentennial. That's gonna be a relatively popular item, at least it was historically. I assume it will be going forward. We're gonna get pricing on that, and I think that's next week that bid comes to. The goal is to have the initial run of coins available by the kickoff in June, if not before. We're also going to do bookmarks that will be handed out to every school kid, regardless of their age, from kindergarten all the way up, across all the public parochial schools across Cole County. They'll have a little history of Cole County on the back, compliments of Sam, our local historian. You keep getting mentioned in all this stuff. It'll also have the dates of the events that are going on with respect to the bicentennial, and then it'll also have some of the logo material on it, too. There's also the commemorative rifle, which is done through Historical Armory, Inc. If you go to their website, you can drop down, look at counties, and you can see the Historical Armory, Cole County Limited Edition. There are 200 of them being made. They are either Henry Golden Boys, or I guess what they call them, standard black Henrys. But they're beautiful guns, they're engraved, and they have all of the communities in the county engraved on them, along with the logo, along with the dates of bicentennial. And you can get them customized, too. I think they could be relatively, I think it's $694 for a blackout, and it's $928 for a golden boy. So, if you're interested in that, that's at the Historical Armory website if you, I think it's historicalarmory.com if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, also, in conjunction with the Tri-County Bicentennial, we did a program where we invited 4th graders. Last year, they were 3rd graders, now they're 4th graders, across all of Cole County. We notified all the schools to talk, to come up with a presentation that would talk about Cole County Bicentennial, and our logo or our theme was, see it right there, looking back, looking forward, because we wanted to encompass both the last 200 years and where we're going in the future. We received a number of submissions. The committee met last week. We spent a lot of time evaluating all the submissions. We had some debate about the submissions, and we came to the conclusion that there were two that were the two winners. One of which Sam has up on the board, which was done as a PowerPoint presentation. The other of which is right here on the table, which I guess I can unfold and lay it on the table, Sam.
This is South School, and really, there were some good, it was hard, but.
So, I turned it the wrong way, sorry, guys. Didn't realize that when I opened it up, it was gonna go that direction. So this is the South School, this is Mrs., I believe, this is Megan Dute-Hafer's 4th grade class at South School did this presentation. I'd encourage everybody to look at it. And then Cole R1 did this presentation, and I don't know, Sam, are you gonna flip through it?
Yeah, I had Debbie go ahead and, we gave them, you know, we said you can do, we didn't limit them, you know, we said you can do a play, you can do PowerPoint, you can do videos, and this is what Cole R1 at Russellville came up with.
So, this is the PowerPoint that they came up with. We thought this was one of the two best presentations, so if you wanna, I don't know how you wanna flip through it, Sam.
Just, just go through, I think, you know, read. They all wanna be football players.
They got varsity team this year coming up.
Coming up.
That's it.
So you can see it's a presentation from their 4th grade class that covered looking back, looking forward. Thought that was really great, and this one, I can leave this out.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I think we're gonna try to figure out a way to have these two particularly featured here inside the annex, and perhaps the other ones that were submitted, too. Have those accessible, too. I think that covers, in somewhat abbreviated fashion, the various items. There was a couple of business items we needed to address very quickly. So, the Cole County Bicentennial is a 501(c)(4) social welfare organization. It's a not-for-profit corporation here in Missouri. We created it recently, basically in the interests of making sure there was a structure that was available. As I know that the commission has appropriated money, we do need to have a cooperative agreement. I worked with Jill to get a cooperative agreement. I can give you guys a copy of that. It's short and sweet. And I also have an invoice that, once the agreement's approved, can be submitted and handed out to that Sam. I'll give it to you. And basically, it's, you know, our goal is to use the funds that you all have appropriated to promote the bicentennial, to get the education improvements out, let people know what's going on, the coins, the events that are gonna occur, all the way up through the actual official date, which is, I think, November 16th.
16th, yeah.
And shortly thereafter, with respect to the Tri-County Bicentennial, we'll do a handoff to the state, because next year's the state's bicentennial. And then our anticipation with respect to these funds are, any funds that are left over, we'd like to keep a, we'd like to keep a balance in the account going forward. The purpose of that would be, we can move it into an interest-bearing account, and it would be available for the 250th celebration. It won't have to come back to the commission, but we wouldn't wanna put all the money that's left over into that. We just wanna keep a small sum in there so that the next, the next go-around, 50 years from now, when we're all gone, they can, well, you guys are younger, you guys will still be around. We can, they'll have a seed money to get started on this. With that, any questions?
No, thank you guys for running with that. You all have done some pretty cool stuff with it, the gun, the coin, and the bourbon.
And this, we will be taking the classes to the Capitol April 16th?
April 16th, there'll be a kickoff at the Capitol.
The three counties, yeah.
In conjunction with the First Lady, so I think it'll be a nice event for the school kids to come to. Get an opportunity to recognize them for the work they've done on this, and also kinda kickoff our celebration for the Tri-County Bicentennial.
Assuming that the bulk of the funds will be used for the monuments?
They'll be used for, initially to do the coin, some of these.
Some of the startup outline, initial.
And then the bookmarks, the coins, and then coming back monuments where we decide we wanna put them again. That's, I think some of that's to be determined where they would go, where the monuments would go. We'd like probably to put a monument in Marion to commemorate where the first courthouse was. Right now, I think there's a sign stuck there.
Yeah. Rodney Garnett is, he knows everything there is to know about Marion, and he's on our committee.
And I understand with respect to the landscaping here, there's money for some type of monument that could match up. The goal, the goal is to try, through the course of fundraising, using the $25,000 in start-up seed money, but also for the permanent structures, is to be able to find most of that without coming back and bringing additional funding from the commission, aside from what's been appropriated, as I understand, through the landscaping concept. That's something I don't know.
Well, I think there was money appropriated through the site improvements project to purchase a monument for, out here. As I remember, I'd have to look, but anyway, most of the things that you had talked about should be moneymakers versus.
They are.
I mean, the coins, the bourbon, I mean, the rifle doesn't, that's, that's an individual thing, so.
We're raffling off 200 chances for the proof rifle, which has been donated. But yes, you're correct. I mean, the goal is to try to raise as much money as we can to put a permanent marker, something permanent around the county, so people remember the bicentennial. And not have to come back to the commission for funding to do that, beyond what you all have already done.
Yeah, we met Friday over at the Trailhead. It was colder than, but anyway, but I think we're gonna have to do some concrete work and stuff around it, so. It's actually, you know, gonna be a little bit more expensive than what we thought it was gonna be, too.
I know a guy that can probably do that for you.
Oh, okay.
So if anybody wants to volunteer, happy to take.
You're good, Jeff.
Yeah.
I move that we approve and sign the agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if I should abstain or just.
Shouldn't abstain?
Yeah.
For what?
Well, since I'm, I'm on a committee and I'm the.
He's on the committee as part of the commission.
Right, but he's an officer.
Yes.
It's kinda like, it's always safer.
Just to be, just to be, I, yeah.
I remember doing that a few times.
So how does that work? Also, he's.
Lynn gets to point the.
I get that, but.
We got two guesses, it don't matter.
Well, I realize that, but I mean, if he's on another entity that we're approving money to, isn't that a conflict?
He didn't vote on it, so.
Doesn't matter, I don't think.
He abstained, I mean, my opinion is, by abstaining and not voting on it, I mean, it's a non-paid position. I don't think there's any endearment issues there. I think the extension is a safety extension.
Okay.
In my opinion, I would defer to your county councilor.
I agree with Mark.
Hey, Mark.
She would have to recuse herself.
And Mark, here's a bill.
You have the invoice.
Well, there's an invoice.
We have to be invoiced, we can say.
Here's a sign of that you have an executive, I don't know if he's gonna countersign, and there's no Kristin.
Go for it, I got layer dice.
Okay, anything else for me?
No.
No, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll try to come back next month, and we'll, as we get it a month closer, we'll do it again. Next month, we'll be very close, obviously, to the event over at the Capitol.
Might have coins, too, by then.
You don't get that thing mounted, Frank?
I don't know, it's, it's pretty neat.
Well, yeah, but.
I don't know what it would cost, I don't know what it would cost to mount it.
Like, two grand, probably.
I know a guy.
And plexiglass.
Okay.
It is pretty neat.
Okay, okay. Let me put away all my wearers. Bids and contracts, signing of the FTP Soul Source.
The Soul Source was approved to run in the paper at the end of January, so this is just signing of it.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I move that we sign the Soul Source advertisement for the FTP grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bid awards, 2020-7 Pipes.
We have the 2020-07 Pipes Award. We had a couple bidders on it, and we're recommending to bid it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available materials.
My computer's all jacked up. You got a copy of that, or?
Yeah, there's only one bid on it.
I can't open any of these up.
Do you need a copy, Joe?
No. My computer's playing nice today.
Why we only get one bid on that?
You got, you got one bid, you know, for the metal pipe, and then you've got two bids that's on the backside of that, one of the plastic pipes. One of those is the ADS pipe that you just bought, which is that core and main.
Yeah.
Again, you did not give the price, they did it in on the concrete pipe, as much as I chased them down to get a bid, we still didn't get it. But the actual metal pipe, they were metal covered.
Okay.
I mean, is there other people that make this stuff?
There are.
They won't send you a price list?
I really don't know why they don't, I guess they, I don't feel like it's being competitive or something, that they just didn't bid in here, I don't know.
Is there a state contract on any of this?
That one, I'm not sure of. If they actually do have one or not.
So, how are we awarding this? Lowest and best with available materials?
Yeah.
So if they don't have it, you're gonna go find somebody else that does?
As far as metal pipe goes, I've never seen metal covers, not ever. They've all been on the first, whatever we need, they've all been on the first. At ADS, the same way, that's the plastic pipe that's good in there, that's two, it's actually two core and main, because actually the pipe that they sell, I've never had problems with, they've never been on good.
So, plastic pipe, is it a PVC, is it NDS, is it, what is it?
It's a black plastic pipe with a double wall. It's got a smooth interior.
Smooth interior. Core and main, I'm not familiar with them. Are they?
That was the.
The water and sewer? Oh, it's HD water supply. And water and sewer didn't wanna submit a price, or? You guys wanna award this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I move that we award pipes to lowest and best with available materials.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2020-06 leased equipment.
For 2020-06, we had three people submit their bids, um, and we're recommending to award it to the lowest and best in each category with available equipment.
I don't have any questions on that.
So what rubber tire loader are we currently renting?
The one we currently have is the one from Bobcat, which is a Deuce on DL250.
So that's, that went up $1,500 a month?
$1,500, we put in $45.
Yeah, but we were paying $3,000 a month?
We were, yes. It keeps creeping up little by little.
So it might be difficult. I move that we reject the bids. Just because we need to get more prices. There's other places out there that can rent this stuff, and so. Anyway, I mean, there's, there's so many no bids out here, that there's Equipment Share, there's other places out there that rent this bigger stuff, and we just need to get a price from them, whether it's a formal bid or not. So hydraulic excavators. I mean, I, I just, we either need to buy some of this stuff, or we need to get some other bids, 'cause, I mean, there was no bid on the majority of these things, except for the standard stuff, so.
I think we still have to bid it. We still have to go and bid it in the public, you know, so. Whether we contact these vendors to bid on it or not, we can still do that again.
So we got a motion on the floor, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second for discussion. Okay.
Good.
Sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
Yeah.
So what were you saying?
I still think we have to officially bid it, um, because we're talking quite a bit of money here within that 90-day period, and it has to be officially bid.
Right.
We can solicit vendors to try to, to get them to bid, you know, in our process, but to just go out and get phone bids, I don't think that's, that's not gonna work.
I think we've run into this like every year, and we've.
It's gotta be a little more, a little more each year, like usually we've gotten, always gotten price for pay, uh, but I know that it's in circumstances are that I'm guessing that's why they probably haven't been turning a bid in this year. Otherwise, these are our usual four that have always been on our list.
So if the price is creeping up like that, we need to revisit leasing versus purchasing?
Yeah.
It's kinda like everything, you know, everything just keeps going up.
Well, I mean, so, uh, what about Martin Equipment out of Ashland?
They should be on our list.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not saying that we can't do business with Bobcat of Columbia, but what I am saying is, we need to ask for bids, and if we have to formally turn it in for them, I don't care if they just sent us a, a price list, turn it in for them as an official bid. But, um, I mean, $1,500 a month, that's, that's a lot, and we've been hanging on to that thing, what, at least six to eight months?
Always, yeah.
Yep.
There's nothing saying the other bids are gonna be lower, so, I mean.
I can write it in the paper again and contact, reach out to people.
But these have been read publicly, opened publicly, so they all know what the other ones are already bidding.
True.
So it's kind of.
But, but everybody knows what everybody's rates is, I mean, I can make five phone calls today and find out what their rates are, and it probably ain't gonna change a whole lot. I mean, their rates are their rates. So, anyway.
They could do the same thing, I mean, they know what the bid's gonna be, they can call to ABC and say, hey, what's your rates? They got a general idea, you know, they may sharpen their pencil and try to reduce it a little bit and provide a bid, but I'm not gonna go out there and write their bid for them and submit it.
We can't, we can't do that. They'll have to submit it as a sealed, and then we'd have to do the bid opening, they can't turn it into me and. We just have it in my emails, I can't have that.
That's what they have salesman for, and if it's a good salesman, he's gonna be trying to figure out who, who rents stuff, or who do you have cha, uh, chance of getting stuff from, so. I'm not, I don't think I'm for rejecting these. I want to move forward with these, keep this moving, but for next year, I think we may need to reach out to some people and try to, try to get some better prices possibly. I don't know if it'd help or not. I, I'm just curious why they don't submit some kind of bid. Are we?
Yeah, you and I are, we're all in business, if somebody have a chance or I'm gonna bid on.
Well, so, in my experience in, in dealing with pipes or equipment or whatever, I mean, there's probably not that much in it for them to, to rent the stuff versus selling it. I mean, if you, if we were buying it, I'm sure you'd get all kinds of bids for rubber tire loader or whatever, so. But in the equipment business, or the rental business, it's probably not as lucrative, but. I mean, I know, you know, I think Purple Wave rents some stuff, or maybe they, maybe they just sell stuff, I don't know. But I know Equipment Share rents stuff, and, um, I mean, I, I've just used those companies, and so it's, you know, you gotta, you gotta bug them to get the prices. So. Anyway, discussion over.
But if we call them, I mean, that's not the same as us getting a bid, so.
Well, but if you, so if I call you to, tomorrow, and you don't send me your list of equipment prices, which is typically published on most websites, or like through Bobcat of Columbia, I can go on their website and I can get a list of all their equipment rental prices probably right now. And so, I may have to call you several times to get you to send that to me in a formal deal, or.
Yeah, I don't know, but we can try to solicit some bids, more bids next year, but I just don't think it's gonna change anything. So.
Yeah.
Move on this year, and then next year maybe look at it again, and.
So when we, when we rent this stuff, do we go get it?
Mostly done yet.
Where is, uh, where's United Rentals in Jefferson City?
Uh, I really don't know. I don't know if we have a Jefferson.
That's a new bid, it wasn't on last year's.
But they don't have a location in Jefferson City?
That's what was on the bid.
I know they're plumbed, but I'm not sure where they have a location here.
I couldn't tell you here.
So I'd say the three things that we probably rent the most are a skid steer, a rubber tire loader, and maybe an excavator. That'd be accurate?
Yes.
Mini excavator or an excavator?
That would be, I mean, most of the time, but yeah, a rubber tire loader and a, a migrant skid steer wants the walls, and a, or one of the bigger excavators, other than that, that's not our normal. And sometimes if you rent a portable excavator.
So the problem for me would be is if I gotta go to Columbia, I mean, I only got one from, well, I got two in Columbia, so if I gotta go pick them up, I got three or four hours of time and going and getting it and bringing it back, and then same way the other way. So you gotta figure out what your time's worth and go on and getting this stuff, and then taking it back.
Yeah, that's what you want to consider when you're looking at buying it then.
Okay, we got them.
This is through Orson Farm and Home, but it doesn't have an address in Jefferson City. We got one in Columbia and one in Raleigh. So, not sure where it's at in here, Jeff.
What's the threshold on that? Is it $5,000 in 90 days?
Depends, it's $6,000.
Six.
$6,000 in 90 days? If you're under that, you can get phone bids.
That, as long as it's not, like, if you rent these equipment and you spend $45,000 this month, then, um, you can't rent it the next month to go to be over your $6,000, and that'd be a formal.
Right.
Yeah, it's rolling, yeah, and it's countywide, not that probably anybody else buys from that vendor, but you guys, but.
Okay.
Okay.
So we got a motion. Motion was to reject the bid.
Motion to reject the bid, second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Huh, he's second?
He don't have to vote on it even though. We'll have to discuss it with my chief's mind.
All opposed?
Aye. Aye.
God damn. Excuse my language. Okay.
Told you I was just being difficult.
I know.
Gotta give Larry some more gray hairs before he leaves.
So then we need a motion to approve 2020-06 leased equipment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 2020-05 vegetation spray materials.
We had one bid on the 2020-05, and it was nutrient ag solution. We're recommending to build that.
That's real good luck with their sprays. We burned down a lot of it around the guard route and stuff, and we do one at a gate, and that pretty well holds us for the year.
Their bare ground pre-mixes are very good.
All right, I move that we award vegetative spray materials to nutrient ag solutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2020-04 mosquito spray materials.
Um, for 2020-04, we received two bids in, um, and we're recommending to award it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available materials.
So which material do you, are you gonna buy?
We actually have not purchased any of this in the last two years. We put a bid out for the sole purpose of the fact that if we have a, if something comes up that we need to spray the steel, and as of right now, we're still sitting on 57 gallons, I think it's great. We don't spray unless we absolutely have to anymore. We usually, uh, Clark, a lot of times we do that bio mist 3.5. They tell us they want us to move around from one product to the other one.
Right.
And sometimes that, like bio mist for 12, it's on there, the one's got 17 on it, and the other one had $70, which seems like a whole lot, but the per acre price on them sometimes is different. But you really gotta research that bit more, it's actually the best before you actually purchase it.
So.
Again, we don't spray or don't fog unless, if we work with the health department and they do testing and stuff, or if there's a known virus that has appeared, and they're notified by state CDC, that at the point, we go out and fog it. Normally, all we do is go out and pour out the, the brickheads, the, in the drains and stuff, just where we have standing water and some vision and stuff like that.
All right, I move that we award mosquito spray materials to the lowest and best with availability.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2020-03 blades.
For 2020-03, we received multiple bids in, and we are recommending again to award it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available materials.
So I just had one question with Fabic Cat closing up. Are they gonna honor their prices just beyond Columbia?
Just beyond Columbia.
So out here, they're gonna have a drop point here in Jeff City yet, so.
Or more than one, we're gonna put a drop box out at our shop, where not only if we can use it, but other contractors, local contractors can, they'll still be.
Okay.
Locally available.
Like, you can see the pedals are actually, they're all guaranteed and they're priced for three months.
Just waiting on Sam.
So if they're the lowest, but they only guarantee it for three months, do you call them back and?
Uh, we usually, what we do is we call whoever's got the lowest price on it, and sometimes they will honor that price, and sometimes they will mark it, but they say that they can't, they have to semi, they will honor that price, and at that time, we usually deliver from.
Then you go to the next one, okay?
Good, moving on and on.
Yeah. Yeah.
I move that we award to, I move that we awards grater and snow blades to the lowest and best with availability.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Note that Sam was absent for the vote, please.
All right.
All right, road materials.
We have 2020-02 road materials. We got multiple bids on this one, and again, we're recommending the lowest and best bid near the work site with available materials.
Okay, any questions? All right, I move that we award lowest and best closest to the work site with available materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, Sam was absent again, please. Uh, you can have him. Thank you. Okay, we got a little bit of a security issue going on, so I think that's why Sam stepped out. Signing of FY18 LEPTA equipment grant, award for rapid IDs. That's John's, okay. Okay. Um, the, all right, we're gonna skip over those. Council payable review.
I'd ask for approval of council payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Again, Sam's absent. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number two.
This is for $15,000. It's EMS money that was received, and they're putting it back into their budget under training, and I think it. Got what it's for. Reimbursement for that training course, digit tech, so I do need action today to put that back in the budget.
Questions? I move that we sign court order number two.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Um, environmental fee structure discussion.
So it has been some time since the environmental fees were reviewed and increased. We did a review of our ordinance, and we looked at the fees from other surrounding counties, so, um. You giving them the top page, the food, the, you have the sewage?
We got both.
So do you wanna talk about sewage first, or you wanna talk about food first?
Oh, let's talk about food before we talk about sewage.
All right, I'll do it in the right order. So, um, right now, our current permit fee is $25, um, and we charge that whether it's a high-risk, medium, or low-risk facility, or a temporary food establishment, right, for a thing, so, say, 25, yeah. So you can see right there, Brandon did quite a bit of research, and you can see the fees from the surrounding counties, and Cape Trotter and Franklin are kinda, and Pettis are kinda like-sized counties. And then on the back page are the list of the establishments we have now, so. So, you're saying twenty five, yeah, so you can see right there, um, Brandon did quite a bit of research, and you can see the fees from the surrounding counties, and Cape Crowder and Franklin are kinda, and Pettis are kinda like-sized counties, and then on the back page are the list of the establishments we have now, so, I'll let you look at that, and then if you have questions, I'll defer to Brandon, because he, he really did a great job putting all this together.
So, on the back page, you, you got some high risks that are highlighted, are currently not billed, does that mean we will be billing those, or?
We would like to, we currently do not bill the schools, but we do spend a lot of time in there doing those inspections, and we would like to bill them.
You got any other questions on the food?
No, I got the email, and I didn't look at it real close yet, so I apologize, still looking at them.
Think about that for a minute.
So.
There you go, wanna ask questions?
What are the fees at right now?
Right now, we charge twenty five dollars, high, low, medium, temporary food, it's all twenty five dollars.
Except for the ones in yellow, which we currently do not charge.
So when you say you spend quite a bit of time at the schools, what, I mean, what does that equate to? I mean, is that two or three times a year, or is it more?
Two times a year, and probably, um, typically, probably what about average of three hours, um, at least, round trip, uh, and that's a lot, depending on the size of the school, sometimes it's two of us, and at the smaller schools, it's just one person.
Hey, we're, we're gonna have to, uh, recess for about an hour, we have a bomb threat, and, uh, so they wanna bring a dog in, so we're gonna have to evacuate. Yeah.
Where are we evacuating to?
Well, we're out of the building, 'cause. Well, that's where they're gonna have a jury, they were talking about taking them out, but I, I think that they're gonna bring in dogs.